Meeting with Arlington City Council. Meeting has been called for interviews of the top two candidates for the office of police chief. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel and I'll be presiding. At my left, also at the table here is Amy Newsom. And at this time, before I call the roll, I would invite you to stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Why don't we just go around the table for the benefit of the interviewee and introduce yourself so he can hear your full name? John, you want to start?
Yep, I'm John Thomas, city council member.
Joe Morgan, city council.
Amy Newsom, city administrator. We've met.
Rich Nagel, mayor.
Shirley Thatcher, city council member.
Matt Sherpy, city council.
Okay. And after we got done with that, I'll say right down that four members present, I don't have to do any more roll. Police chief interviews this evening, followed by discussion. And my goal at the end of the discussion, at the end of the evening, before we adjourn, would be to hopefully reach a consensus as far as who we would want to offer a position to. So we can keep that in mind. That action would take place then next to, the official action of offering a contract would take place at next Tuesday's council meeting. So with that in mind, let's get going with the interviews. And I'll, I'll start. Question number one, and you can introduce yourself along with the answer. Question number one is, please tell us about yourself.
So I'm Luke Ellenson. I guess I've been, I worked for the city of St. Louis Park and been with that police department since nineteen ninety-seven. Started there as a CSO, worked there for two years and then got hired on as an officer in ninety-nine. And been with that department and still currently employed with that department. During those twenty-two, twenty-three years, I've had a lot of experiences, good and bad, but things that I'm hoping to bring to this city and the citizens here in Arlington. I have a son, he's seventeen, and currently wants follows father's footsteps. I'm not sure if that's good or bad right now, but he's doing that and I'm proud of him for that. And currently, yeah, it's, enjoy sports, still play active, still, you know, play softball. Barely been trying. And I like to stay active and do other sports and hunt and stuff. So that's just a little bit about me and thank you for having me interview and give a chance.
Are you, you aren't asking. Joe, do you want to take the next one, please?
Please explain what interests you in the position of police chief and why you applied.
So as I, some have heard before, that my grandparents lived in Arlington. So I have some connection there where I grew up kind of in Arlington. My uncle, my, you know, my, so my own uncles have lived here, grew up here. My latest uncle was, has grown up here, went to high school, graduated. It's just a small town that I think that I've always been interested in and had ties to. As far as being a police chief, it's just something that I've always kind of dreamt of, is doing a chief, police chief in a small town. For any other reason, it's just that I like that smaller community where I think it's where you know everybody. You have a little more ties, a little more connection, getting a little more involved, I think, and I believe. So I think as a chief of police, it's just something, I've always liked to be a leader. I think it's something that I can, that I do well. I think if you ask any of my peers, they'll say that I'm always a leader, but also work together as a team. And something I think would be interesting to me is to come here and have that team, make a team, and be able to build a partnership with the city and the city citizens. So this is something I've always wanted to. My, like I said before, my applying for this position has no, has nothing to do with where I work now. I'm very happy there and pleased with that department. If I was to finish out my career there, I'd be very happy doing that then. So it's just something that I took a leap at and wanted to do. And Arlington has happened to fall in place as something where, except where I have a little ties to, so.
Okay. As, as the new police chief, how would you introduce yourself to and build relationships with the community? And how would you define community policy policing?
I would introduce myself, I think there's no other better way than walking and getting out and to know your storefronts and getting to know your public offices. I think introducing myself to the school is a good part, is a good way. And that's something that I would look forward to do as my current position. I am a school resource officer at this moment. And I have built great relationships with the students and the staff there and have always trying to build up on that. I think, as I said before in previous interviews, that I'm a big believer that you get out and you walk. You get out and you meet your storefronts, your businesses, your, and it's not just your local businesses, like your smaller ones, but your big ones. You know, you walk in, introduce yourself and, but just say, hey, I'm here to say hi. I'm just here to chat with you and see if there's anything to do. I feel that I have built great relationships by doing that. Where I work now, a lot of the guys will tell you if there's something that we need or a connection, they'll ask me because I have that connection with a lot of our store, you know, our businesses and our community members. So that's one way that I see that I would, I'd be seen. I would be seen, I'd get out, I'd have communication and talk to people and see what their interests are, what their concerns are. And then slowly start addressing those concerns. I think it's nothing that you can't come into this position and then just start hammering away. It's something you have to slow because I know change is different and change is also different for the community. So to have a new police chief is going to take some time. I'm hoping that is, it'll be a good time and it'll be a good positive action. So that is one way, I think, that I would introduce myself to the community. As far as community policing, community policing to me is, is something we've been practicing ever since law enforcement. This is how you practice and I've stated that before. And I think that community policing is, you know, you're building partnerships. You're not, you're not putting a Band-Aid on things that you're gonna want to do surgery, you want to see and get down to the root of it and see if you can fix it. I think that it's different now where people want you to be seen. They want you to be out in that patrol car, get out of that patrol car. And it doesn't mean that in your patrol car that you're stopping people, writing tickets. To me, compassion is a big thing when it comes to policing and community policing. It's compassion, knowing that these people are going to work, that they have a job, that money is tight for everybody. So just issuing citations for maybe a mistake, I think there's times where it's warranted and that you have to issue a citation, there's times you don't. And this is how you go about doing that. So I think community policing is just, it's building that relationship, building that partnership with your community.
Okay, Matt, do you want to access?
Yep. What are the most important values and ethics you demonstrate as a leader? And give us an example of these in practice.
I think you put on a uniform, you represent your city. And the ethics is, is how you conduct yourself as an officer. And to be a leader isn't to be having people follow you, but to be along with them. I think it's that you work beside them, you work with them, you're a leader by example. And so I believe that things that I've done in the past, ethically, I think that, that St. Louis Park is always, it's just something that's come natural to me. I hold myself with high regards to the city and represent my department. And I don't think I've ever let them down in that area. It's, as an example, I think it's just going out of the way to do something for somebody in the community. I think one time we basically, it's, I do Toys for Tots. That's something I donate my time. And it's something where I collect toys and will go and deliver it to the Marines at K-11, something that we do down in the metro area. Something that I do on my own time. I think that you, you know, I'll donate my own money, I'll donate my time. I think that's ethics, I think that's giving back to the community. That's just one example, I, there's sure there's more.
So list three characteristics traits that you think all police officers should have? And which one do you think is most important?
I believe you should be compassionate. I think that you need to be a leader and you have to have ethics. To me, I would say compassion is probably one of my biggest ones. You have to have compassion and understand people. And I think if you have compassion and understand people that you're dealing with, you're going to get more back. And you're going to solve more problems with them than fighting them or not trying to relate to them or not trying to understand them. Or not being able to communicate with them. So I would say, I've always told people that I train, that compassion is a big thing. When I was being trained in, I would look back to my FTO, who is still a good friend of mine now. And he taught me that compassion. And that was, we found a homeless guy in the park. We, instead of saying, hey, get out of here or whatever, he gave him a blanket. He went to McDonald's, bought him food. And then we found a place that was warrant because it was in the middle of winter. Said, hey, you can stay here, but by this time you have to leave. And we checked on him and he was gone by the time we asked him to leave. And that's something to me that stuck in my head, that's something that I practice and something that I'll just still on, the people that I, are under me is that have a little compassion. It's not about just black and white. It's not about just doing the job and saying, hey, you can easily say, you gotta leave, get out of here and then walk away. But I think that makes a difference because you make that connection. Somewhere down the road, sometimes these people come back and they'll help you. And it doesn't mean can help you with a case, can help you with helping somebody else, but it does come back.
Thanks.
Describe two decisions that you have made as a law enforcement officer that you wish you could take back.
That's a good question. There's one and I won't say it's good or bad, but as a decision, and I don't say, I guess I'm not saying it's a wrong decision, I just wish the outcome of the decision was better. And that was basically, there was a gal that came in with her ma, it was mom and daughter come in and they wanted me to remove the father from the house. Daughter didn't leave with mom, but was there to support her. I asked her why and mom said that she just wanted them in the house, they didn't get along, kind of a domestic situation. Advised I can't make them come out of the house. But instead of just stopping there, I went on and said, you know, explain more. She then said that, that he had beat her the night before. And I said, if you can go with that, we'll go with domestic, we'll get an order of protection. So I wrote up the report, told her, don't go back to the house, stay with somebody, do these things, stay in touch with the daughter. I found out that she's staying with dad who lives in the city. But then it was weeks later, heading out home and got the call of a guy calling saying he just killed his wife. So right away I knew the address, went there. Me and a couple of guys would go in and there she was, she was stabbed, she was dead. So there's wishing I could have done something different to save her, knowing that maybe there wasn't. But at the same time, was there something I could have done? Was there something different? I followed all the policies, I did what we did. It was just later finding out that she decided to go back to do some work when she shut up. And her father, her daughter said, don't go back, and she did. So I think the decision of maybe wishing I could have done more or something, or maybe checked up on her more, that would have been maybe something I wished I could have done differently. But I'm not sure if the outcome would have been different. Is it two, correct? And then I guess another one would be, this one is just, I'll put it out there, younger cop, so not making the best decisions, but playing a practical joke that went wrong. And it was just, people can laugh at it now, but I'll tell you that. Nobody was hurt, nothing, it's just, it was Halloween working, where we all get along. Decided to, decided to play joke on our dispatcher who's dressed up in a scream outfit. Can't tell you why I had a scream outfit in my outfit, but I did. And went up there and of course everybody's hiding and they're going to laugh. And I had grabbed a knife and went up to the window and I tapped the window, grabbed it, and stabbed it, tapped it. And it's a bulletproof window and it cracked. Yeah, and so we were like, what did you do? I don't know what happened. So my deputy chief comes in, tell him the story, he's dying, he's laughing. And he says, guy, I did us a favor. Well, chief did not find humor in that, so I had to get suspended. And like I said, probably something I kind of made a better decision on at that time. And like I said, that was when I was younger. You know, some people say it was funny, some did not. My lesson learned is, it was not, so.
As a leader within an organization, you must often build support for goals and projects from people who do not report to you and over whom you have no authority. Tell us about a situation in which you demonstrated that you could build the needed support.
And I apologize, could you, could I do that one more time, please?
As a leader within an organization, you must often build support for goals and projects from people who do not report to you and over whom you have no authority. Tell us about a situation in which you demonstrated that you can build the needed support.
I think with that is just, I'll go back to school. I, I have, I had a friend, I met a child and the mother was unable to attend a school, a function. And they asked if I would do that. And I think I didn't have to do that. And it was suggested by one of the, a citizen that, it was, we had a Meadowbrook is the place where we had, a citizen that ran this development. And so I worked with her. I didn't report to her, she had no authority over me, but I worked together with her. And by doing things and listening to her suggestions, I went on this field trip with this child and basically built a great relationship to the point where it was ten years later, this child was in high school and comes up to me and goes, hey, how you doing? Remember we went on this field trip? That's just one of the things where I think working with her and taking her advice and listening to her, she helped me build a lot of relationships. She helped me, you know, I think, advance my relationships with these kids and then with the parents of these kids. And so, and then by doing that, I had other parents that would then, would come to me and said, hey, we, we saw you interact with him, we saw you do this. And as a police officer, they just see police officer, they never see somebody interacting with somebody else and they saw this. And then suggested that I go and be a school resource officer and they pushed and pushed for that. But I think that just by listening to somebody, like I said, that I work with that has nothing, no authority over me, or if that's what your question is. They, being able to work with them really helped and helped advance my career and I think helped me make some good friendships.
Okay. What do you see as the greatest challenge in policing a small community? And how would you address this?
Being a small community, I, you know, it's been a while since I've lived in a small community. I come from a big city, I live in Jordan, Lakeville, Apple Valley, bigger cities. You know, I worked in St. Louis Park. I think from talking to friends and some family that do live in small cities, that it's that everybody knows your business. And that, and everybody has some say or want to have some say. It's going to be, I think, tough trying to please everybody and trying to please the community without disappointing people. And I think that I have to do what's going to be best for the majority of the community, not just one person or maybe a small group of people. So I think that's what's going to be one of the toughest things is that coming in here, a lot of people are going to have a lot of big expectations and a lot of, a lot of things they're going to want to see changed. And that's also a big thing is making those changes. And it's not going to happen overnight and it's going to have to happen slowly and make sure that it's done correctly.
Okay. As a police chief, you'd be the main representative of the police department as its organizational spokesman in front of the media and with, and with residents or other audiences. Tell us about your public speak, public presentation and relationship, relation skills and your comfort level with public speaking.
Right now, I, I am one of the, I do active shooter training. I go to public businesses and I will stand in front of thirty people. I've done it at Radio Heart, which is all the radio personnel, and give a PowerPoint presentation on active shooter. I've spoken in front of an auditorium of children or kids and talked about active shooter. And so I'm comfortable in getting in front of a group of people and talking about a topic. And it's, it's, over time, it's come natural. And I think over time I've learned how to speak in front of people and have gotten compliments. I don't shy away from it. And as far as, you know, the media, been around enough incidents to know that the less you say to them is the better. And those people that you have to communicate with first before you start talking to the media. So I know how to handle the media and if that was ever to happen, that, and how we should handle it and take also, you know, talk to you guys and how you guys want to handle it also. And so just a little side note, I was on Judge Judy, so I've been on TV. So a lot of people see me, though. And that was a case where it was, it was, I went as a witness as a cop. And this lady had given her car for somebody to test drive and he test drove it and demolished it. And he took a turn too fast and of course he's slapping on the ground saying he's hurt, he wasn't. And then he says the brakes went out and kindly showed him the skid marks, which said the brakes were working properly. Went back to the house and she's like, what do I do? And I said, you, you're going to have to take him to civil court. You lent him his car and he demolished it, take him to civil court. So she did. And Judge Judy's, they go through these court cases, I don't know if you know anything about it. And they picked that one and they picked her. And at first she called me and said, hey, I'm going to be on Judge Judy. And she goes, do you want to do it? And I said, sure. And she goes, oh, they don't want you. And then two weeks later she called me and says, they want you, they want a cop to be on there, be like the first cop on there ever. And took a little coaxing from my chief to go on there and said, you can't be in uniform. I said, they don't want me in uniform, I said, just like suit. And I went on there and I think I represented our department pretty well. It was a fun experience and she won, so she got somebody back for her car, which was good too, so.
That's cool. Have you thought about what goals you'd like to, to set for your first year as the police chief? It's so outlined in some of them for us.
I think I had the privilege of just riding around, along Friday night for a couple hours. And for me, that was good insight to see maybe what the department, the people that work there want. And maybe what the community, they can give you insight with the community may be looking for. So my, what I was hearing from them is that they would like a chief that is visible, that they're able to work aside, you know, along with and side with. And so my goal was just to build that relationship with the department and then build that department's relationship with the community. That's a big goal and that's going to be a long, I think, it could be a process. But I think that would be the first, one of the first things to do is to get to know you guys as a city council and understand what you guys are looking for in a chief. And try to start with that goal also is to see, hey, what do you guys want to do as chief? You know, from me, what are you looking for? And then that's something I need to start working on. And then also working with the police department, the staff there. And then I think the biggest thing is with the community. That would be my first goal is to start to get the community and get to know the community. And then try gelling all three together. And like I said, that's not going to happen overnight, but that's something that's going to take some work and I'm willing to do that. And I look forward to doing something like that.
What would you do if you had a decision to make when there is no written policy or procedure to follow? Who would you consult?
Well, everybody has to answer somebody. And I answer to you guys as a city council. And I was thinking that it's a decision, it's going to have to see, you know, it's, I would have to consult with you guys. I think it's something that has to be communicated and decided, what was it that they did? What was the problem? And how do we go about solving it? And is that solution, is it discipline? Is it some firing? Is it something else? But it's, it's something that has to be discussed. And I think looking at all areas of what had happened or if that's my understanding of what you're asking. So it's, it's not a decision that I would make on myself. It's something that has to be made, I think, together. And it depends on what that is that we're talking about.
Describe your experience in budget preparation.
Not much. I'm going to be honest, it's very little. I, I did a treasurer for a union, I am now the union president, so I moved up. I have, I ran a reserve unit and we did budgeting for a reserve unit. But it wasn't really as much budgeting as per se as a bigger depart, you know, multiple people. So as I stated in my previous interview with that, that would be something that would be a little hard for me. But I know that's something that I can do. And I know I was offered, you know, there'd be some help and I would gladly take that help. And it's, yeah, there's not much experience there with that, but it's something that I know that's doable and that I've dabbled in smaller areas in the police department, so.
Yes, that's, for the questions, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I did ask, it was, what are you guys looking for in a chief? What is, you asked, what would your goal be? What would you like to see the chief come in and do and or improve on? And I, I know I asked this in my other previous interview panel, so I'm just asking again.
Well, I mean, I would look for someone that would come in and do, you know, become a community leader, you know, and, you know, build that relationship with the community.
And can I ask what, briefly, what would you say that would look like?
Well, well, truthfully, a lot of your earlier answers when, you know, getting out, meeting the people, introducing yourself, building that relationship. I mean, I think that's key early on to do, you know, to, to do that.
And even maintaining that level, you know, in the summertime, in normal years, we have a kind of a get together in the park and, and stuff. And just being present and, and, you know, going to the schools some and, and visiting the businesses. And there's been some talk about, you know, some of the, I don't know what the word is. If it's elderly care centers, you know, there's, they have bingo and different things and just being present and, you know, going through and meeting people and. I think there's even an opportunity within, you know, some of the departments, just getting between the fire and the ambulance and the police kind of working together a little more.
Yeah, I guess for me, I mean, I can, I can, you know, repeat what they said, exactly all of it. It's, it's the relationship building, right? With your team and, and with the community and being out there. And I think the big one that Joe said that I, I really feel is maintaining that. It's easy to do it at first and then get into a routine where you're probably not out as much as you used to be in the beginning, when you first, you know, meet and greet people. I guess for me, that's, that's a big thing, you know, showing up to games and or, you know, community goings-ons, whatever they. community goings ons, whatever they may be, you know, just being seen and building relationships.
And I understand you guys have a winter festival or winter parade or something.
It's the biggest parade in the state, I believe. They don't wanna brag or anything, but.
Probably, probably, yeah.
I've, I've had experiences with uh, as right now for St. Louis Park, I do our Fourth of July event, so uh, I worked that, command that and so we do a lot of with, for security. Um, you know, and then also what we think the community is gonna want at their events for food trucks and whatever else, so I have a lot of experience with that, done that for multiple times, our, we have the uh, Christmas train that comes by, I do that one also and so it's um, I think what you said right, just maintaining it is something and I can tell you right now I think I've gotten more and more over the years instead of less and less, I've maintained my uh, relationships and seem to do more to almost to the point where I've gotten, I have too much, I make too many commitments and where I don't leave time for my family life or my son or something like that, so that's something where, you know, I think at the end of this year, I was telling people, I just wanna clean my plate a little bit, but at the same time, it just seems like I can't say, no, I I just joined the uh, MJOA Minnesota Junior Officer Association, so I'm on that board now, we just had a conference up north and uh decide that's something that I wanna get into, so that's something I can be on still, no matter where I'm at, if I'm at St. Louis Park or if I was to end up here as chief, that's something that I can still participate in. Which I think would be really fun to bring some stuff from here into that and then from there, bring it back into the schools and some of the events and something like that, just great ideas, just some great things that could be uh, presented with school and given to the school. I, this last three years, that's, the school thing's been big for me and so I talk about it a lot, just suppose it's fresh in my mind, but I've done a lot of other things too. And that just, the schools is a big thing where um, at the end of this year, I'd be out of the schools and they cut my position because they made a new training officer position, so by the time the chief, he would like to get me back in that position if they can, so we'll see how it goes. But I hear what you're saying about the maintaining, it is easy to come in here and say, hey, I can do it and then you see me for the first month or two and then suddenly, you know, nah, that's I can't sit in the office and, and you just sit and hide, I, I, I have to drive, I have to be out, I love to communicate, so I I would look forward to that if given a chance.
I think another piece, um, you know, that I'd like to see or envision is, you know, our community, right, number one, but partnering with other uh, uh, agencies, surrounding agencies, right? And making, building relationships with them as well. I mean, cause that, that plays a huge role potentially down the line if anything big were to happen and that sort of thing, training opportunities and or just relationships with the different departments and
I did ask that question too, I, and I forget his name, is it Jason or the officer that rode with, Jason, yeah. He did really well, thank you for, I don't want me to ride with him, um, but I asked Jason that question, cause that is a big thing with me also where we had a chief that was not like that, he did not want, when I first got hired on, our city was one of the most desired cities to work for in the inner city. And so I was very fortunate to get on with them and, but that disappeared because our chief did not want us going outside of our city to build partnerships with any other of the agencies. And we were asked and asked and asked and denied and, and so I asked Jason that same question, I said, do you go and assist any of the other surrounding cities? And he said, no. And I'm not sure what the reasoning was that he said this, at that time, they weren't allowed to, so don't know exactly when he hit into depth on that, but I see the benefit of being able to ask, if another city asks for help, that our officer goes and helps them, this is as if we have a major event here and we set that tone that we don't play with others and we need that time, I think that others aren't gonna come play with us and and I don't, I don't think that you guys don't want that, you wanna be known as a city and I could be wrong, but that, you know, you're gonna help other cities and you're gonna want their help if they need it and we all know that something can happen anywhere, anytime and I hope it never happens here or anywhere else that, you know, we're at, but it, it could. And it's best to be prepared for that and that's one thing that I can learn from St. Louis Park is it's it's, it's getting closer and closer and we've had big events, we've had shootings, we've had mass, you know, an active shooter where we had everybody in the metro area coming to help us and me and another guy were leading that pack and I'm telling, I don't know, it was something else, but it uh, it ended well for us, but so but, you know, I want, that would be one thing I think would be, one of my goals too is to make sure that this is prepared, the city's prepared for if some event happened that we're gonna get our assistance from other cities and agencies, hopefully.
I think, yeah, but they, I agree with everybody on, on what they're saying, you know, with being in the community and and, you know, building those relationships between the other departments in the, in the county, I mean, we're a small county and, you know, each department's small, so if we, we gotta all work together one way. Um, you know, one thing I always remember, you know, some of the chiefs that we've had in the past is, you know, the, the ones that stick out are the ones that were always, whether they were on duty or not, they're in the community and they just talk to you, you know, and that's what's, you know, they were just, they acted like they were members of the community, they wanted to be here, they were, you know, interested in what's going on, so.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you for giving that opportunity.
Thank you.
Maybe I should read the form. I would've failed this pass. Oh my gosh, whatever. Fill out their name, I put the na- correct name on the top of the form, that isn't, it wasn't mine in the applicant spot.
What?
You wanna apply?
I mean, that would be bad. That's right.
Cow tag on his keychain, I kinda like him.
I seen that, I seen that tape.
Oh, so old, gosh.
Nobody doesn't have a brass one, John.
I noticed that.
He was a little more calm than the second interview, they wasn't as nervous, I thought. If I could put my two cents.
Yeah, it probably didn't stand out.
That wasn't thank you, no. Not you.
This is the same, the second one is the same as last time, right? Pretty sure it's the same as the 12th of last time.
I don't think so.
Cause it, it came up the last time, is it related?
Well, it's not related.
Yeah, it's, it's not related to him, so.
Jokingly, as he was reading. I sat in on the person who was joking. I said, well, Joe, we'll see if that's where you, I mean, uh.
Is it related?
I thought, I swear that, I thought, I swear that we had that on the back door.
That's the only ones, yeah, that's the only ones that were going here.
It's gonna tell.
Has to be.
That's your actual interview?
I don't remember if we interviewed him or if he, if he had applied.
I am so absolutely terrible at things that I couldn't even, um.
I remember the last time that there was
But we've had
I said it was council, but I thought it was
Where is your police officer right now?
Hutch, oh, St. Louis.
St. Louis, Missouri.
Hard, no, no.
St. Louis Park.
St. Louis Park.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, lives in Jordan. Do you know who his grandparents are? Ellensons, you remember the Ellensons?
I remember Peter Ellenson.
Yeah, okay, Pete, Pete is his uncle.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Oh, that, cause that's what I asked him before I walked out, I go, is he related to Peter Ellenson or not? Cause that's really
He was like a year or two younger than me in high school.
Who was?
Peter Ellenson.
No, he was younger than me.
He's younger than you?
Yeah.
But there was another one, there was a Lowell. And he, Lowell graduated probably in the early seventies, seventy one, seventy two, seventy three.
Cause Peter would've been like one or two, probably two years younger. Two years younger than me, I think.
Seventy six.
Me?
Yeah.
Eighty one.
I mean, I went the wrong way.
Yeah.
So, seventy eight.
Yeah.
And there's uh, Linea, there's a girl in that family. Peter, Lowell, Linea.
Linea, I remember Linea.
You do? I don't.
She married a Fink.
Yep, she married Alan Fink.
Alan Fink.
Yep.
And his
He was a buddy of my brother's.
His dad was a pastor at St. John's.
Yeah, they graduated together.
I just, I only remember Pete, that's the only one I remember, or the only one that sticks off to me.
He said the names, let's keep that.
Yeah, well, that's why I said it to you, cause I thought you might remember him.
Yep.
Who are you, man? Your other candidate is here. I gave him
Yeah.
I gave him the question.
If you get all, yeah. Matthew gets back, we can bring him in then.
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a couple different memes up there.
I mean, if we're gonna be discussing it tonight, I'd rather
Oh, uh, hold on, that's
Okay.
Just go off memory.
To add the scores up, yeah.
Just go off a memory.
What's that?
Just go off a memory.
Like anybody else can read my check and scratch.
I just wrote a vague report today for something that happened on Monday. Never even looked at the video or audio, just remembered everything.
There you go, there you go.
Just remembered it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I remember things when
Well, how can you do it every day though?
We got so many problems that, you know, I have a guy
Situations are easier to remember than
Hundred percent, yeah. Talking, yeah. Although I can't forget conversations. In six, in six months, I could tell you things that he said, verbatim, but I can't remember names. Faces and conversations and everything else I'm great with, the names are terrible. I think I overload my brain with everything else.
So you had to stay home again today because he was afraid
Until I talk to him multiple times and then I, then I'll remember it.
She threatened to take the kid.
My brother is amazing with names.
So it's, I, I think when you look at, what do you think you have problems?
I don't remember the name, but if
You know, but it's, I just can't believe this poor guy.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm terrible.
I'm the opposite, I'm like, I know, I know you from somewhere, oh, yeah, I saw you at this, this place like three years ago. Remember we talked about this and they're like, what is wrong with you? Boy, I can't remember your name though, like for the life of me. I can recall our conversation, but I can't remember the name. So, it's really odd. But from my current position for like writing reports, it's very hard, very hard.
So, you were, do you investigate or are you a investigator guy?
Yeah, that's
Yep, yep, yep. So, for the county, I do investigations, I do both criminal and FBI. And I'm the only one in the county that does FBI, cause you have to have access to pretty intense information.
So, your parents is and you have a deep, different level of um, sorting through things as a smartphone cop with ninety nine, you know, because of things you've seen or have seen.
And of course, there's some of the old
I don't know, that's a tough question to answer, cause everybody reacts differently, you know? Um, and everybody thinks they really, you know, I have a lot of life experience before I got into law enforcement, you know, so before that, I was a regional loss prevention manager. So I, I ran undercover security for retailers in Minnesota, Wisconsin. You know, so I had like a hundred and ten employees under me, that I did all their scheduling and I did, I did, I did everything and
I swear there was
hosted all the meetings with the boards of directors and CEO and all the managers on onsite locations and bodyguard work, I did a lot of bodyguard work, corporate investigations.
Last time that was a body that was related to rich.
And I'm like, oh, okay. I don't know, I just wanted to do this public service versus private sector. Yeah, honestly.
That's what, that's probably what it was.
You chase a dollar bill long enough and I own my own construction company and like you chase a dollar bill long enough. It's, this is Yeah, it's just Jason's dollar bills. So that, I
Yeah, Jason is my
Yeah, I just remember something about a relationship, yeah. I, I wasn't sure, yeah. Tommy Bogum?
You want to?
Yeah.
Joe, Joe.
He doesn't say Joe.
Joe, he's not
Joe, he's not, Joe, he's not related to me either. Just saying. Nobody asked me, it was kinda about you.
Yeah.
And he's a who?
I kinda tell by your body.
Yeah, let's do it.
Hi, Joe.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, Joe.
Hello.
There, Joe.
Thank you very much. Welcome again. Thank you. Um, Joe, I'm gonna have the council members introduce themselves so you know who you're, who you're talking to.
Okay.
John, you wanna start?
Yeah, I'm John Thomas, city council member.
Nice to meet you.
Joe Morgan, city council.
I'm Amy Newsom, sorry, I forgot my self, I'm bad.
Rich Nagel, mayor.
I'm Shelley Batch, she's a council member.
Nice to meet you.
Matt Sharpie, council member.
All right, well, what we're gonna do here, we have twelve questions and um, I will start with the first one and then you can, along with introducing yourself, you can tell us a little about yourself. That is question number one, so go ahead.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, my name is Joe Nagel, um, I am a, um
Well, thank you for the opportunity, my name is Joe Nagel, um, I am a, um, sergeant with the Hutchinson Police Department. I've been there for twenty-three years, sergeant for eighteen of those. The only reason I remember that part is my son was born the day I was promoted, so he had a birthday a few weeks ago, so, um, makes it easy to reference. Uh, during that time in Hutchinson, I started when I was twenty years old and, uh, was hired as a police officer or patrol officer. Um, got promoted to sergeant and, uh, worked in a variety of roles in the sergeant position, including the investigative sergeant, uh, patrol sergeant. Um, investigative sergeant is a rotating position, that's why I was patrol sergeant, investigative sergeant, patrol sergeant again. Uh, worked in that, was a team leader on our special response team or often, um, called the SWAT team. Um, did that for a number of years. I, I was backing up a little bit, as a patrol officer, I was a, a member of it and then I just got, when I got promoted to sergeant, um, I was a team leader on it. Um, right now, I am a team leader on our crisis negotiation team, um, so, you know, the typical negotiator component of a, of a tactical team is one of my roles that, that I supervise at this time. Uh, like I said, I've been there for twenty-three years, I've had a variety of jobs and assignments, some of them I'm asked for, some of them I've been told to do and that both are fine. Um, I, uh, ran our citizens' police academy for a number of years, I've worked with, um, uh, different entities as far as, um, uh, crime prevention and been on different boards, um, including the McCloud County Domestic Violence Board. Um, and done numerous things for the community and helped with that. Another one of my roles, away from law enforcement, but, um, is that I'm a McCloud County Commissioner. Um, I'm my second term with that, so I started my eighth year. Uh, I, I represent District Five, which is the northwest corner of the city of Hutchinson and then the northwest most two townships of, of McCloud County. With that, I have learned a variety of, of things similar to what a council would do, but at the county, in the county level as far as budgeting, planning, um, economic development, um, all those things that go into running an entity of government. I served as the chair of the board for that, uh, for the McCloud County for four years. Um, and been on a variety of committees, as I'm sure all of you are, including the budget committee, personnel committee and things like that. So, um, married with one son, which you've learned he was eighteen, um, and, um, been married, uh, for twenty-three years also and, uh, have lived in Hutch ever since we, uh, uh, we got out of college and moved there. It's a little bit about me. Okay. Thanks, Joe. The other Joe, take second one.
Please explain what interests you in the position of police chief and why you applied.
Um, well, quite a, and I said this in the first interview, that, you know, I, I really didn't, until recently, have my heart on, on leaving the city of Hutchinson. Um, it, it's been home, it's been good to me, I'm grateful to that community, um, and always will be. Uh, that being said, I do think I have more to offer, um, in, in law enforcement and, and honestly, the city of Hutchinson probably, I've most likely topped out as a, as a sergeant and that's okay. Um, that's how things work and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that and, and I work for great people and, uh, I'm not here to, to badmouth them and I won't. The city of Arlington intrigued me because, you know, with my role as county commissioner, I, I've worked with Sibley County, right? In a, in a lot of different things and learned about Arlington and got to meet Bill Pinsky a, a lot of times and he, he often told me what I was doing wrong. Um, as, as a commissioner and, um, maybe he was right most of the time, I'm not sure, but, um, but, uh, you know, I, I got to learn, learn a lot about Sibley County and along with McCloud County and its similarities, some differences, but also similarities. So that's kind of what I gravitated towards this role for, um, but to answer your question, you know, without, with being direct, it's, it's the, that I just feel that I have more to offer and I'd like to do it in, in a higher leadership role.
Joe? Okay. As new police chief, how would you introduce yourself to and, and build a relationship with the community and how would you define the community policing?
Well, you just have to be, and just be a part of the community. Um, I'm stealing this from a chief of my past, it's, it, it's not the chief's police department, it's the city Arlington's police department. Um, and you need to accept that and you need to realize that and welcome that. And get, and get direction from the community, um, obviously the council, I, I'm not trying to act like that isn't part of the, the process. But the community can also help dictate what things need to be done and how they need to be done and what problems there are. And just have a very open door, uh, policy to, to everyone. Um, if the community wants to come in and talk about a parking issue, let them come in and talk about the parking issue. Um, discuss it with them, listen to them, maybe there's something that you can learn from them that makes some sense that, you know, that the police department isn't doing, isn't doing right or could change without, with very little effort or, um, consequence to anyone. Uh, community policing, it's one of those, you know, buzzword terms that, um, I'm convinced, obviously there's a textbook answer to it, right? But I'm convinced nobody truly knows what it is, because I think it's different everywhere. You know, community policing, you, you can run a police academy, you can, you can run a deer program and you can do all those feel-good things. And they're all important and, and you probably should do all of those. But really just making sure that you understand, you understand how your community works and understand the needs, the wants. You don't always get the wants, um, of, of what, of what the community is.
Okay. Um, what are, what are the most important values and ethics you demonstrate as a leader and give us an example of these in practice?
Um, just my being trustworthy, um, in, in a leadership role. They have, everyone has to be able to trust you, the council, the officers, um, that work with you. You know, often they say they work for you, but I try to, to say they work with you. Um, they have to be able, they have to be able to trust you that you know what you're doing. And they also have to be able to trust you that when you don't know the answer, you're gonna say it and, but you're gonna figure it out. You also need to, um, um, find a way, um, find a, find a way to encourage input from the people that, um, you work with or work for you. Um, and not, um, stifle that, because it, I said this in the last interview, it doesn't have to be my idea, it just has, it, let's just make sure it's the right idea and it's the right way. An example of this is very fresh and I only tell you that because if I stop and pause, I don't want to release more than I should as I do this. But, uh, within the last month, we had a, a significant assault case in the city of Hutchinson that was on the shift that I was supervising. And I had experience levels from my twenty-three years to a thirty-year officer to, uh, what is she? A year and a half officer and a couple in between. And this thing was so intense and dynamic that we all had to, um, kind of do our own things. So you had to, of course, I'm, I'm there coordinating different things such as the crime scene, um, the victim, the suspect, uh, where they're all gonna go, um, meeting or speaking with the county attorney, cause of course it's, you know, these things never happen at two in the afternoon, it's two in the morning. And, and, and I'm coordinating those things and I'm trusting all of them to bring me the information I need to answer those questions. And I'm also saying, okay, what have I missed? And honestly, the year and a half police officer had great ideas, but she wasn't afraid to bring those to me. The thirty-year officer, he's been around the block, he's like, oh, what about this? And not that I wouldn't have thought of it eventually, but I didn't need to because they did. So just that trust piece and, uh, not stifling, um, creativity or, or their input is, is important, in my opinion.
Um, list three characteristics traits that you think all police officers should have and which one do you think is most important?
Three traits? Well, they have to have integrity and I'll put honesty into that. I think they need to be humble, um, because of, you know, the job that we do and the people that we deal with. While often police officers get the stereotype of being arrogant and some are. Um, some would say I am, I suppose in, in particular cir- situations, but, you know, some humility goes a long way i- in my world. And just probably caring, cliche as heck, I get it, but, you know, they, they need to care about what they do and the people that they, they work for or they serve. Um, because if they don't, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long road. People show that caringness or compassion in different ways. Um, and that's all right, as long as you know it's there, but the, they, they've got, you gotta care to do this job, um, in my opinion. And, and what you care about can, can differ in law enforcement, you know, whether it's the big stuff, the little stuff, but, um, you got, in some way or some fashion, you gotta care about it all. And that's, they're all three important and I'm, it's not fair, I've gotta pick one, but, uh, but, you know, that, if you have a, a caring officer, I think that goes a long ways, especially in a smaller town like this. Joe, describe two decisions you have made as a law enforcement officer that you wish you could take back. Just two, huh? And here I sit, uh, uh, stumbling over this. I think, okay, one, one is pretty, uh, you know, pretty by the book. We were at a call, it, it, it's an example, it's kind of a story, but we were, we were at a call. Uh, suspect was throwing knives at us, um, and, um, suspect's throwing knives at us, we sit there, ultimately arrest them, um, ends up in a fight. Couple of officers get hurt, including myself. I wish we'd have tried to talk to him more, I wish we'd have done a better job of that. We got a little aggressive in trying to get him out of there because the situation did, uh, present itself and, you know, I stand behind it, but I think maybe we could have talked a little bit more on that. Um, another one, maybe on a little more personal or touchy side is, I wish I went to taking a day off, um, recently when, uh, one of the officers that I was, that I supervised was involved in a pretty major incident in Hutchinson and took a ride on a, on a, I don't know if you saw it on the news or if you watched TMZ, it was on there too, but, uh, took a ride on a, I took a ride on a, a running board down the road.
I actually, I did see that.
Yeah, that, that bugs me when I could have been or should have been working and I didn't do anything wrong by taking the day off, right? But that kind of stuff, uh, uh, bugs me and, and I always overthink that type of thing, you know, what, what happened if I was there? Would it have changed it? Probably not, but, um, just two small examples, there's a lot of mistakes I've made, okay? And if you let me sit here longer, I'll think of more stories where I could have done this better and I could have done that better or changed my approach to, um, how I dealt with an officer or a discipline thing or opened my big mouth when I shouldn't have, okay? There's a lot of those things that are out there. I gave you two quick examples, but, um, there's many more, I'm a man with many flaws, um, but I, I admit them and I, I try to, I try not to make the same mistakes twice. Thank you.
As a leader within an organization, you must often build support for goals and projects from people who do not report to you and over whom you have no authority. Tell us about a situation in which you demonstrated that you could build the needed support.
Well, if I may, being a county commissioner, right? I mean, you're, you're constantly trying to build support from constituents. Um, yes, you're elected and you oversee, you have one vote, so you're trying to build, you're trying to build trust and equity with fellow commissioners. Other elected officials in the county world, the sheriff does not report to the county board. The, uh, auditor treasurer does not report to the county board, the county attorney does not, and he likes to tell you that. So, but they, they, those things need to be, um, you know, you need to build those things with trust, build that trust. I like to say you do it with facts and not emotion, okay? And, and then in the end, don't hold grudges, but if you can lay out the facts, explain your side of it, count, uh, point, counterpoint to things. Honestly, not be afraid to let it be their idea, doesn't have to be mine, that works a lot too. Um, but, you know, building those coalitions and, and that type of thing is something that is constant in that role. Same as a sergeant, right? You're, you're trying to get, chief throws a policy at these guys that they gotta cut their hair and they're mad. Silly example, but, you know, they're, they're mad, they gotta get a shorter haircut. All right, well, you know, I'm not a believer in, sometimes it's unavoidable, but I'm not a believer in, well, chief said so do it, you know? Well, you know, you start to talk to them and, and first of all, you let them calm down and then you start to talk to them and say, hey, now think about this, you know? How you look in uniform is really sometimes how people are gonna, right or wrong, judge you on your performance. So if you look like heck, that's not necessarily the image or the reputation that the, uh, the chief or, or the police department as a whole want, want to, uh, portray. Again, silly example, but the, the point of what I'm trying to get at is some people are only gonna interact with the police department, which is good, once or twice, right? Ten percent of the public's gonna meet with you all the time, but, you know, they, a small portion of them are gonna see you once or twice. So to give that positive image, to give that professional, um, professional image to them is very important. So, um, those are some examples of how I try to build that trust and, and again, I mean, trust is the word of the day, I guess, but, um, build those relationships and show that, you know, bring everybody to an idea. Remembering, maybe they've got a different idea or they can tweak that idea and that's not the end of the world either.
Okay. Uh, what do you see as the greatest challenge in policing the small community and how would you address this?
The, I think, I mean, I think getting to know the community and understanding it will be, you know, the initial challenge and I think that can be done rather quickly by, um, opening myself up to, um, ideas from other people, other people's experience, the current officers, what they've been through, what they've seen, what they've done. Um, big picture, I think it's gonna be how the city develops. I mean, from what I can tell, the city Arlington is poised to grow, right? I mean, two-twelve is gonna be four lane all the way out here, all the way out, you're ten miles off of that. Looks like, you know, I'm not gonna get trapped here into saying I know all of this, but, you know, it just really looks like a town that, that could grow. So being able to grow with it, it is important and, and, and grow responsibly. Okay, does that mean, um, so the easy thing is to say, well, you need more cops and maybe you do, all right? Uh, I'm not saying any more cops right now, but so just, just get, let me walk through this. So, so you need more cops, well, do you, or like, there's a number of officers, fine, if you had a support staff that's shared with planning and zoning. You know, are you able to share staff, are you able to share equipment as, as the city grows? Um, uh, on the flip side, something doesn't go the way we hope it does and you, and you need to dial things back. Maybe that's the same answers, right? Share staff, share resources when you go with that. But I think the challenge for any city, no matter the size, is being able to adapt to what, what's going on, cause it's, it's always a revolving door. Nah, it's always a moving target.
My turn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As police chief, you'd be the main representative of the police department as its organizational spokesman in front of the media and with residents or other audiences. Tell us about your public speaking presentation and relation skills and your comfort level with public speaking.
Well, I guess that's for somebody else to judge on the quality of it, but the comfort of it is there. Um, you know, I've been to courses and classes through law enforcement where, you know, they have reporters talk to you and interview you and, and do thing, you know, and try to trick you and, and understand that. I've written press releases, um, for the, for the Hutchinson Police Department that have been distributed and I understand the importance of accuracy in those and the importance of giving the information that you can and, and making sure you don't give the information that you can't. You know, I, I sit in front of a microphone real, I mean, publicly, two times a month at, at a commissioner meeting and have I ever made a mistake of saying something I shouldn't have done? Um, but, you know. But, you know, just the importance of understanding that your words, um, you know, your words mean something as they come out, and you need to be clear, and I'm not sure I'm being that today, because I had a rook canal yesterday, so forgive me if I'm struggling a little bit, that just went straight to my head, but as I worry about it, but the, you know, the importance of accuracy, keeping the information clear, concise, accurate, and, uh, and understanding that the media has a job to do, right? So allow them to do their job, and explain to them if there's something that we can't release, this is why, and if there is a point we can't release it, we will, so that then you can build again, forgive me, that trust with media, especially local media, that you're being transparent.
So have you thought about what goals you'd like to set for you the first year as the police chief? Have you thought of any, have you thought about what goals you'd like to set for yourself for your first year as police chief? So please, please outline, outline some of them.
Well, for myself, and I hope it doesn't take a year, but it might, just, uh, just really getting a grasp of the community, all aspects of it, from the council to the public safety, whether it's police, fire, EMS, understanding that piece, uh, where the city wants to go, understanding the goals that they have, so that I can help, I can be a part of that. I'm a big fan of staying in your lane, but, you know, but can the lane of the police department or the police chief aid and assist a lane in in a different, uh, um, aspect of the city? So just really understanding that. I purposely have not thought through what goals I would have for the department, and I don't know if that was part of the question or not, but I I have not thought of that, because I don't know that I understand it well enough to say that, yeah, we gotta change this. There might be nothing that needs to be changed. But, you know, we need to change this, we need to do that. Without understanding the bigger overall picture of the city, you know, that would be difficult for me to do. But for me, just understanding the city, building that trust, and making sure, uh, that we're all working together.
What did you do if you have a decision to make when there is no written policy or procedure to follow? Who would you consult?
Well, depending on the amount of time you had, um, and the urgency of that, but I would go to the city administrator, I'd go to the city attorney, and, um, and start with them, um, depending on the aspect of the, um, the scope of the of the decision. Is it something that needs to come to council before we make that decision? Do we have time to bring it to council before that decision? Is it something that the city attorney says that's the fire chief's role, stay in your lane, go talk, go talk to them? Is it a, is it a public works, is it a, you know, a planning and zoning issue? Bring in the people that are necessary, right? Now, as a police chief, uh, I would report to the city administrator, so that would be my first stop. But that doesn't mean that I wouldn't consult to bring in other people with better, more knowledge, or 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 better experience in the area that we're trying to make a decision on. Thank you.
Describe your experience in budget preparation.
Um, been part of small preparation within the city of Hutchinson, projects, programs, uh, in the investigative unit had, you know, a little bit more when you're dealing with, uh, the programs. We had an ICAC program, which is a computer, you know, investigation unit, um, our child protection unit, um, dealt with the school resource officer and the contracts that we had to, uh, present to the school board for that, where you go to the school board and and give that presentation, and tell them what they're getting for their, you know, their forty to fifty thousand dollars. Um, so in the in the police department level, some smaller numbers, just project based. Been part of the big discussion, it's about three million to four million dollar budget, um, in the city of Hutchinson, been part of the meetings and the discussion about what we need and how it goes. Capital outlay, whether it be squad cars, or, um, uh, equipment based, uh, what those needs were. As a county, it's a much more, it's a thirty thousand feet level to the to the budget process, you're dealing with the property tax levy, um, you're dealing with grants, and, um, I brought up last time, the ARPA funds, you know, that one-time money that that comes in, how you're gonna spend that so you don't trap yourself in the future of having some recurring costs. And if you're gonna have the recurring costs, are you okay with that, and are you ready to budget for that? I think both have helped me, you know, obviously, the law enforcement piece helps me as I walk in here, but I think the county commissioner role has helped me to be a better steward of the money, even in the police department role, because understanding that this is money that when you affect property taxes, that affects people, right? So if you're gonna raise the the levy three percent, you know, what does that do to the person, and to to the homeowner, to the family? So that three percent is real to them. So when you're saying, well, we need another squad car, well, you know, a lot of people say, well, just put the other squad car back together, right? And, uh, sometimes you can, and sometimes you can't, so being able to justify that, those costs, and understand that, uh, people can and should question you and challenge you on your budget is probably what I've learned um, the most, and probably what I've gained the most experience.
Okay, well, Joe, that concludes the questions. Do you have any questions for us?
You know, I I don't. Last time I talked about what you were looking for in a chief, and and the community policing piece seemed seemed very important. And and I think I would bring that to the table. I just appreciate the opportunity. I know this is a a process that takes some time, and is a a process that you need to, uh, you know, get the right person for, so I I if I'm that right person, great, and if it works out, I'd be very grateful, but if I'm not, I I respect that, and, uh, I wish you the best, and and still gonna be around somehow, some way.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, spent a little time grading.
Fire away.
Situational.
Tell us about the
Is it too late to get in on this? Good luck, guys.
Thanks for all you have.
You're welcome. Did you want some?
Did you have a question, right?
Okay.
Well, Kenny, are you applying, or what?
I think it's
Come on, sit up! I got my own questions, not on those.
Tell us about some of the stuff you regret. The question was two?
Two.
I think there's gonna be four to five for you.
Tell us about the goat in the bathroom.
Uh, I wrecked a squad car one time. Uh, yep, that was pretty tough on that bad boy. I went to four feet of water with it.
That's why it's still not
It had three thousand mile mark.
That makes it actually even worse.
When I returned, he made me give my leather jacket back, just to I miss that jacket. Um, this guy, when we interviewed him, um, I thought he did a really nice job, I know he's he's got the experience, there's no doubt about it. I told Ben only before, I said, I'd like to take both of them, put them in a big paper sack, shake them up, and come up with the perfect one. You know, but consider all we, when Rich was there, while we listened to to begin with, these two shine. And so you're gonna have a little bit of these, I'm not sure, but
I wanna thank you
Yeah, I wanna thank you for letting me have the opportunity to go through the first round with you, for you.
Thank you.
It was kinda fun.
Thank you for doing it.
And I let my license go with three months after I retired, so it take a lot of, uh, a lot of money and a little bit of schooling to get back into it, and I don't know if they'd want me.
I appreciate you sitting in.
Yes.
Um, you know, there's certain things, as my experience lends me, right, that I can, that I can, uh, interview with, but it has nothing to do with the situational pieces that you guys know best, right? You know those answers. I could say, oh, yeah, that sounds good, and you'll be like, no, no.
Well, there are no scenario-based questions.
Here, not here.
The questions that we offered them the first time were basic questions similar to what you had. I kinda went off the first go-round as to, uh, which horse caught my eye. You know, listening to their stories, and listening to how they present themselves, and knowing what you guys are looking for, knowing what you've had. You don't wanna go backwards, you wanna go forward, and I think, uh, I think we both agreed that with these two guys, you're not gonna go backwards, either one of them. You know, I, I'm sure, I'm sure after Amy read my notes on my pages, it was like, what the hell are you writing about, but I remember everybody that we interviewed right here, I remember, you know, in fact, the first gentleman, I told him, I said, is this your good luck suit, or is the first one you wore a good luck suit, because you have two different suits on? You know, and, uh, I would want your job right now.
Hey, I think we basically left here after the first round, saying, once we decided on the two, like, well, council has a very tough decision with either one of these candidates.
I would agree.
A good, good
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good position to be in.
It really is.
I'd sure like to be a little more than listening to the rest of your comments, but
It's an open meeting, Kenny.
It's an open meeting, you can stay. Well, I would say within fifteen minutes, we should be ready.
I mean, I don't know why you're standing there as you say, I mean, I haven't seen you for
I think I'm under water.
Sorry. That's why we have to have a discussion. Yeah, and I just, I scored, as as we did it. I I do, too, I think, some, except it was different questions that each Excel, but, you know, but
They answered differently.
They answered differently, but but I just couldn't Yeah, because I did, I told the first one, I had, you know, I did it, I kept it written.
Do you two want me to add your numbers, too?
I'm doing that. Now you interrupted me, I have to start over. Thank you.
I got them all added, you want them?
I'm just tolling everybody.
Start over.
We got that bead set up.
We're supposed to be done here, and then it might take more than thirty-five minutes? Here, you can have this piece of paper, I'm done with that one, oh, here, I should circle mine.
I can read almost any hand-dogging.
That's that one for me.
Hers is worse.
What?
Is that a nine and a one? He was talking about his chicken scratch.
Well, that's because I drew a circle around my number, and then it kinda went into the number, and then I had to re redo it, and I'm still counting. You asked me another question. You know, maybe I won't add this correctly. Should I just guess?
Oh, Ralphie, what do you think? Huh? What do you think, Ralphie?
Ralphie. It's gonna be a tough choice. I I do think that there were four very good candidates.
Yep, very good.
I'm keeping mine. Yep, you don't want mine yet. Mine gets divulged, only if needed, only if need be.
And I'll just hand these numbers over to you.
Okay.
I just did the math for you.
That's great. So are you going to render an opinion on who you think would be easier to work with, because you're their supervisor? It's up to you. I mean, obviously, different personalities, I mean, there's, you know.
There's definitely.
Yeah, there's a
What did I do wrong? Oh, I'm scoring that one.
Oh, you were scoring the last one? No, not the we asked.
I'm like, how was that possible?
So you're, yeah.
Do you score the question on this one, did you, Michelle? So, we need to subtract some points, I think, or something.
Okay.
See, I didn't follow the directions.
Go ahead, take your shoes off.
Maybe I'm gonna use my phone instead of my brain.
This is, I say, use your calculator, please.
That's what I'm doing now. Everybody can wait for me, that's okay.
Everybody has to go to the bathroom, now that's just
Let me get a drink of, drink of water.
Drink of water, go to the bathroom.
Didn't know it was supposed to be this difficult. That is not, there's twelve questions, okay, that's possible, then. And that's different, then. Why don't you add my numbers?
Give me your stuff.
What the hell, did I not add them right, please? We still don't care.
Yes, actually, we are. You want me to do your math?
No, that's fun. I think
We do, there is a time limit.
I thought I heard someone say extension.
We're all right.
Yeah, my number is wrong.
All right, just redo it and pass them both over.
Here, there's that one. Thanks for having me correct that, and actually use a calculator, that's probably better.
So, and this does not include, did you have any questions?
No.
All right.
I scribbled that out, did you see that? Yeah, I don't know why that number changed, I must have missed a question to begin with. All right. I'm more within two, two.
Two, two, two.
So are mine.
It's pretty close. That's right, two and two. Two, that's right. Click of the wrist. See, I had to make you redo your math.
You did have to make me redo my math, just ignore the
Can I have my shit off?
Yeah, I was like.
Alright, um, just want me to read the totals, or uh, how do you want this? Who placed two first, or how many of you placed the, saying, you know, the first interviewer first or second or what, you know? Or do you just want the total numbers?
Let's hear the total.
Total numbers.
Really, I would like to hear who's your number one and who's your number two.
I can do that too, I can do that too.
Cause I think that maybe, in a lot of ways, that maybe be a better judge, because my number is probably, well, I don't know what.
Okay, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, let's do that, and then I'll give you a total, so you can, you can use both as judging. Uh, Joe Morgan, he placed Luke first, uh, John Thomas, it was a tie.
Wow, how's that?
Matt Sharpie placed Luke first, Michelle Batcher placed Luke first.
So, so, I mean, my scores came out the same, but, I mean, if I had to choose between the two, you know. I lean towards Luke and for the, just the reason some of his answers with the compassion, that build a community. I was surprised they came out exactly the same, because I scored them as each question answered, but, so.
So total wise, we had four hundred and one for Luke, three hundred eighty-nine for Joe.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, I put in a couple of points for both of them, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I thought they were very good candidates.
Were, were good, they, they were different.
Yes, very different.
But they were both good.
They're both good, I agree with you there, um, my only, I think, yeah, both would fit in just fine and it's, and work well. I think Joe, the only, the only hangup I had with him is he's got very, very deep roots in Hutch and McLeod County. And I think that was the only answer that he gave, because, you know, at first, he didn't think about doing it, because of how tied he is to, to that community. So, in the back of his mind, he's still gonna be, you know, he seems like a very ambitious person too. I mean, they're both very ambitious, but I don't know how much politically he's thinking of moving up the line too, he could easily go anywhere he wants.
So with both measures in that same direction, is it a consensus to offer the position to Luke on Tuesday night? We will make the, we will make the decision Tuesday, but just a consensus.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think it was really amazing that all of us picked the same guy, so, or the same person, I would kind of say. I um, yeah, I, I was impressed by.
Do you want to eat one of these?
Luke guessed the most with the answers, so.
Yeah, okay, then, for the record, uh, and we're recording here, so for the record, we're saying that. The council at Tuesday night's meeting will formalize the offer to Luke Ellenson for the chief of police. And that would be an offer for uh, you know, obviously, to be negotiated and worked on, but.
Right.
Okay, alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Yes.
Who, who seconded, I'm sorry, Joe, okay. Meeting adjourned.
You gotta say hi, everybody.
Oh, all in favor, say hi. Against. Carried, meeting adjourned.